Okay, we'll call to order the May 11th meeting of the Peters Township Council. Roll call, Mr. Lauer.
Mr. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Clive.
President.
Mr. Arper.
Here.
Mr. Mal.
President.
Mr. Perk.
Here.
Here. Stand to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, special reports. Chief, you're up.
Good evening, council. I hope everybody's well tonight. Just plugging along with since the last time we have met. Thank you, sir. You're good there. We have attended Senator Iveno's municipal conference call, and that conference call was designated for municipalities and emergency management coordinators in kind of what it takes to become yellow and when we do become yellow, and the governor's red, yellow, green status. She provided some insight for grant funding and things like that, and municipal reimbursement for COVID-19 costs. Currently, on the fire department side of that, we have the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, which is an annual grant given out by FEMA every year. They have opened up the AFGS, S is for supplement, and what we can do is just as the fire department costs outside of municipal cost, try to get some of our costs reimbursed for that as She was answering some questions from other municipalities, again with a lot of grant funding. By zip code, 15317, we're up 24 from the last time we met. We were at 22. 15367, is it 7 from the last time we met? It was 6. We've been getting requests from some of our business owners in the municipality about occupancy for their spaces. Within the governor's plan to reopen to the yellow phase, those that are allowed to have occupants will only be allowed to have 50% of their maximum occupancy. For example, it wasn't any one point in time, but in the maximum occupancy of this room, say it's 50, we would be at 25. Does that deem it safe? Not necessarily, but we've been given, they've been given that guidance to reach out to fire departments and municipalities to get that information. What it talks about before that, though, is trying to schedule one-on-one appointments and keeping social distancing within businesses, and that's what the message that we're trying to convey to those businesses as well, with success. The main businesses that this is coming from are the car dealerships, and we've guided three of them so far. Does council have any questions?
No.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
So, in terms of our own operations, waste management has restored complete trash collection, so they're doing bulk items, should be putting out one bulk item a week, and they're also doing yard waste. Along those same lines, starting next week, we're going to begin to do our program where we do branch pickup and shipping at the Public Works Department. The library has devised a method to do Toronto off and curbside checkout of books and return to books. We're waiting for direction from the state library as to whether or not that's going to be permitted because library operations are prohibited under yellow. So, for the most part, we're continuing as we were. The building is still closed to the public, but that doesn't mean we haven't been meeting with people. We do schedule meetings, and a lot of those meetings occur actually in this space. We're continuing to get the job done in terms of the planning department and the Public Works Department, police and fire. So, you know, with that, we're going to continue to the extent that people could work from home, as it suggests with under yellow, we're going to continue to have people work from home, so.
Okay.
I did have one question. A while back, we advertised to interview for summer camp counselors.
We have not.
Is that on hold?
We have not yet. It's on hold. But I don't, I honestly do not believe those programs are going to occur, but I don't want to cancel those yet, and so I'm going to be surprised, given what we're being told. We're going to see very many of our summer activities.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is audience comments. Live audience comments are suspended as a result of the COVID situation. The public can submit comments by email to the township. Any that are submitted will be read prior to the meeting and shared with council. I understand that we do have one comment this evening, so.
Yes, you have a comment that has been submitted by John Mazza, who lives at 115 Royal Trail, Delicia, and it reads, "Sir and madam, I am a 15-year resident of Peters Township. I've compiled a visual aid of COVID-19 deaths per PA county. See attached. I'd like to know the rationale behind continued lockdown measures being taken given this data. Washington County has a .001% death rate. The worst PA county dealt with is only at .057%. I see this data and conclude that no shutdown is necessary, especially activities like the outdoor tennis center. I want to voice my disagreement with how all of this has been handled from the governor on down the line. What if the projections of doom are not adequate to suspend key constitutional liberties and ruin the strong economy? The costs associated with these lockdowns has not been properly considered nor weighed properly. This is one citizen's opinion. Thank you and have a nice day."
He did send an email to me, and I don't know if he shared a similar email with anybody else regarding the tennis center, which I tend to agree with. I look at that similar to the way golf is. It's not a, you're not getting up in person with anybody. I would think that that would be something good, if enough bizarre.
It's not, it's not, if you're following the guidelines of the state of Pennsylvania, it's not a permitted activity, particularly the courts inside the tennis park are considered in the recreation.
I can understand that.
But I get it in terms of the outdoor, particularly if you're playing singles, but in a court, if we follow the state guidelines, I believe that those facilities are not to be open. The thing that you got to keep in mind, and this is what would concern me, if we choose to deviate from the state guidelines, I don't know what liability we take upon ourselves. And I don't know how our insurance carrier would react to that decision. I don't know to what extent you may be waiving your protections under the torts claim that acts, which very much limits what you can sue them as a valid for. You know, when I see the counties talking about applying the governor's and the health department's order, I think that's the thing that they should be most concerned about is what does that mean for their own liability, for their own institutions?
I think that I also had an observation. I walked past the rec center and I asked about the skate park. And to Mr. Seigle's point, you know, the skate park's outdoors. We closed all the playgrounds. We did close the skate park. When I walked past it, there were probably 18 young fellows and girls, none of whom were masked or practicing social distancing. And so the inconsistency, and I can agree with your observation, outdoor recreational things seem like they should have been able to stay open or open sooner.
It.
So do we have liability with the skate park?
Well, actually, and I'll be honest with you, I had, and I was actually asked this question by Mr. Perkis earlier, and I had not seen guidance on that, but literally today I saw guidance that skate parks are be treated as other playground structures, and that area should be closed, so.
So how is it that we're allowed to golf then? Is it because?
No, no, no. If you're asking me to explain the rationales of the state of Pennsylvania, but, you know, you.
It's the lobby, guys. There's no skateboard lobby.
A great deal of limitations on how you do it.
Let me tell you, it's not fun right now. I mean, what we have to go through at Valley Brook, you can't, you got to put your own bag on the cart, you have one cart per person.
Yeah.
You have to go certain paths. It's bizarre.
I mean, I can see the rationale that in tennis, both players are touching the same ball, right?
Yes.
Whereas opposed to golf, they're, they're not, right?
Well, if you were playing doubles, I think it would.
Yeah, right.
Well, I think that, you know, we appreciate Mr. Mazza's letter, and I think many of us just, you know, would agree with, you know, certainly some of what he says, but unfortunately, we don't have much to say about it right here. So it's, you know, send it on to the governor and, okay. Unfinished business, there is none. Due business. First item is approval for recording purposes of the Florian subdivision plan as shown on drawings prepared by Harsman Group dated March 3rd for Michael and Margaret Florian.
So Mr. and Mrs. Florian purchased actually all four of these lots. When they built their home, their home was extended across the boundary line for two of the lots. So this small section here is across this existing property line. What Mr. Florian wants to do now is, and this is 12 years ago that this occurred, so what Mr. Florian wants to do now is re-subdivide these properties so as to make this a buildable lot.
How does he get to look for?
There's a right wing, it goes back this way.
That's private drive?
This is Laramore.
Laramore Court, is that what it is?
Laramore Drive.
Private driveway, yes.
There's actually another house that's back here.
Oh, okay. So I wanted to make sure we weren't landlocking.
No, well, this lot already exists. So these create conforming lots. The one thing that is different from when it went to the planning commission, but before it came to council, Mr. Zook and I both thought it would be important to identify these private easements that provide the connection back to this sewer line that these are all serviced by, particularly since this line's going to run across this lot as well as this lot. Mr. Florian has no intention right now currently of selling this, but at some point in the future, that will happen, and we just thought it was important that that be shown. But with that, my recommendation that Peters Township Council approve for recording purposes of the Florian subdivision plan. The one note that I would have is that it should be based upon the revised plan and dated May 4th, 2020.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Florian subdivision plan as shown on drawings prepared by Harsman Group dated March 3rd, 2020, and revise on May 4th, 2020 to include the private sanitary store easement.
My second.
Discussion.
I did have one question. It was, I sent us several to Mr. Zook, who was kind of up the. My only other remaining question is about the driveway, because the lot line moves, the driveway for the middle house, the middle property is still going to be on the other lot, and is that something we normally?
You don't normally see it, but it certainly is allowed, the de-easement across this property.
So he'd have to deal with the people when he decides to sell it, whether they're willing to accept that, or he has to re-subdivide and?
Well, he could relocate this driveway. It could become a shared driveway between the two lots.
That's true.
I think there's a number of possibilities.
Anything else?
It's not common, but it's not.
Yeah, it's been done before. Anything else? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is approval for recording purposes of Valley Brook Cafe subdivision plan shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping dated February 6, 2020 for Valley Brook Property LLC.
So as part of the lease agreement with Mr. Robinson, he had indicated willingness to subdivide his 9.2 acre tract of land and provide to the township this parcel. You know, if you can see, there's a street that runs through it. It probably has little value for the purposes that, you know, a building, but what it does have value for is as a possible site for an MS4 project, and so therefore it's of great value to the township. What this subdivision is, it creates the possibility at a future date when the lease requires that it be transferred, that this property be transferred to the township. So it's my recommendation is council approve for recording purposes of Valley Brook Cafe subdivision plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just one question. I also mentioned this to Mr. Zook, and I wondered whether there was any value. We don't normally like to create property that has funky looking shapes and that dog leg there, and I asked whether or not it was any value of perhaps that smaller portion behind our property being added to the donation. Mr. Somitis doesn't think it's going to be a benefit one way or the other to increase the value of the MS4, so.
Yeah, but the other thing is that Mr. Robinson is going to be using this property under a fairly long-term lease, and if anything, it kind of squares this property up, so.
Well, that's why, that was part of the question. It was just making the lot lines regular as opposed to irregular.
Right.
One last question. It's not, we're not ready to have the donation, but do we need to assess a value for the property he's going to be donating? Should that be done now or when the time comes?
I mean, I guess for our purposes, it doesn't matter. For his purposes, it may, and I would suggest that Mr. Robinson is responsible in terms of it.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Anything else? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, next item is granting an easement for Peters Township sanitary authority on property owned by Peters Township along Valley Brook Road.
So one of the things that is occurring right now is that the interceptor that services, that will service a high school to the treatment plant is being upgraded and be able to handle the increased flows. When they were designing this, one of the things they discovered is that on this piece of property, this is the piece of property that will be leased by Mr. Robinson, is that while this sewer has existed for years, this easement was never established. In addition to that, they have asked that this easement be widened so that they can service this line. Both of these have no impact on Mr. Robinson's ability to use that property, and it's in my recommendation that the appropriate township officials be authorized to execute an easement for this purpose.
Moved that we authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an agreement establishing a sanitary store easement on township property located at 330 Valley Brook Road.
Second.
Discussion.
I have another question. Is that going to affect his ability to put that ramp or whatever from the rear of his property, that property to the trail?
No.
Okay. That's all right.
Okay.
Well, and wouldn't that ramp supposedly be actually on his property?
Yes, actually, if we go back here. That ramp is, here's the property line, that ramp's located over there.
Okay.
And there's no problem about the paved driveway over top of that?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is granting an easement to West Penn Power for the purpose of providing a three-phase power to Peters Township Public Works Garage.
So one of the things that's in the 2020 budget is the replacement of the existing brine-making equipment. When Mr. Hershey has investigated it, the preference would be that we would acquire equipment that has three-phase power, and the indication from West Penn Power is that they're willing to extend this power from across here at little or no cost for them to be able to formalize that in a proposal. They need OSFET to execute an easement so that they in fact know that if they go through the work, the project will actually be done. So it's my recommendation that we authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an agreement, an easement of West Penn Power for the purpose of allowing the garage.
I had a question about the language, because it talks about a easement, and it says something about going through the tax parcel number 5406, blah, 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 blah. How much is that? Is that the whole, just that property, or is it the entire park?
It's, no, I think that tax ideas for the entire park, but it's.
Well, I don't think that's a good idea, because I don't see anywhere where it limits it to just that facility. It says.
What does Exhibit A say, Frank?
Huh?
What does Exhibit A say?
I didn't, I don't think there was an Exhibit A. Is there one online? I don't know.
No, because I didn't, that's the thing. I didn't see there being an Exhibit A, because the first page of that easement right-ofway agreement says that it's more, the easement area is more specifically described by Exhibit A.
Right.
But I don't see Exhibit A.
Yeah, I didn't see that, and I was concerned that since it says that parcel number.
You're right.
That technically we could be granting them an easement through that entire parcel, and I don't think that's what we intended.
Well, if you can, if you can condition this upon us providing to a description that in fact indicates that it's only the services building.
As indicated, yeah.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, and then we're all second Mr. Lewis's motion, whatever.
I don't know who made the motion.
Okay, is an amended motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Change of order for work occurring for the Green Light Go grant for signal upgrade for Valley Brook and McMurray Center Church and McMurray Intersections.
So is council aware, the township, well, a number of years ago at this point, received a Green Light Go grant with the idea of installing an additional traffic signal on the road. When that was investigated, it was determined that that would not have the desired effect, and so that project was modified to create these longer turning lanes on East McMurray Road. One of the things that Mr. Mondry was successful in doing is convincing the state of Pennsylvania to allow us to use some of that money to also address concerns at the center church and East McMurray Road traffic signals as well. So the reason why you have three change orders is that's the way the state of Pennsylvania wants you to proceed on these, with each individual item having a detailed justification. So the first change order has to deal with the placement of a no turn on red actuated sign.
It's already there.
Yes, at this location. Well, the reason why it's already there is that this money needs to be expended by the end of May, and what this was intended to do was to address a problem that was brought to us by a resident who was attempting to make a right-hand turn on red. And they attempted to make that turn at the same time someone coming up over this hill was trying to beat the green arrow, and this person ended up over the grass here and there was a near accident. So what happens now with that signal there, when that green arrow is lit, there's no turn on red permitted, and it's actuated at the same time. What it allows is that the turn on reds can continue when this light is stopped and no one is making that turn, so. The other thing, keep in mind, was firefighters discovered the ramification device on this signal was not functioning. We would have normally had to pay to have that replaced ourselves. Mr. Mondry convinced the state of Pennsylvania to allow us to use money to replace that with them paying up 70% of the cost. And then finally, back at the other intersection. The way they made with all these radar devices, one of the conduits they needed to be able to get across the street was full, and so they have put in that additional conduit in. So the total cost of the change orders were $10,584, of which $7,938 is paid for by Pendote, and the township's responsibility is $2,640. So it's my recommendation that Peters Township Council operate change orders 1, 2, and 3 with traffic and structural engineering.
So moved.
Second.
The discussion?
I have a question about the percentage markup. I know that we have to pay the bill, and I'm agreeing with that, but is 30% overhead and profit on labor normal?
That would be normal on the Pendote project.
Okay. I can't, I couldn't remember the last time we had one, so I couldn't locate it anymore. I just thought that was kind of high.
Paul, can you go back to the slide again that shows the center church?
Is it this one?
Yeah. Is there any way that we could somehow put a sign up there that shows that when you get to the top of the hill, that you're coming from the high school, that that lane ends there, that there is not a left turn there? I know it's a left turn for that one driveway, but at least three times a week when I'm sitting there, somebody gets into that lane thinking, I don't know where they think they're going.
Yeah.
You know? Can we put like a, like a no error, you know, where there's no turn, something like that up there?
Skull and crossbones.
You know? Because I mean, the number of times I've seen people almost get into wrecks up there because someone will pull into that turn lane and think that that's the straight lane and realize they're in the wrong lane and try to cut off the person who's in the lane next to them.
Well, hey, but we have looked at this a couple of times. Let's look at it one more time with traffic engineers, find out whether there's some kind of margin that we can.
You would think signings would work, but the left-hand turn in the CVS is living proof that.
Right. Because you would think that the traffic light, the traffic light that faces the opposite direction, the one that's closest to us on that photo, if you could put up a no-left-turn sign on there or something, I think that may would wake somebody up, because I think that it's only a matter of time before somebody.
Ahead on, you're right.
Maybe you should just say, "Not in the lane."
I think there's already a sign up there that says private drive, and I guess if people think that means private drive, like, you know, like East Highland Drive, private drive or something.
Like, is this made especially for you?
Yeah, right.
You would have to say even address on there.
So, get a motion in a second. Are we, okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, resolution amending to Peters Township Police Policy Manual General Order Number 2503 Youth Commission.
So at our last meeting, council adopted ordinance 851, amended the code ordinance to provide, to restate the membership of the youth commission, but this is in front of you tonight, is a resolution that adopts General Order Number 2503, which describes to the members of the police department policies and procedures that fall with regard to youth commissions. So. Moved we approve Resolution 05-01-20, amending the Peters Township Police Manual General Order Number 2503. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Revision of Peters Township Code of Ordinances as it relates to membership and operation of advisory boards.
So when we were, had in front of council the ordinance with regard to the youth commission, Mr. Merrill suggested that we look at the possibility of going back and looking at all of the various advisory boards in the township for the purposes of standardizing the way those boards are provided for, but then in addition to that, to consider codifying certain requirements for participation on this board, so. And I, my question to council is, is that something that you want to see the community's office supervise having done, so?
And if I can just speak to that, I also have forwarded to all of you the note that I sent to Mr. Mal and Mr. Lauer with some of the ideas of what I thought could be looked at. Part of it is to look at consistency across how we describe these. In the ordinances, the different boards are directed and spoken about differently. They're described differently. There are certain specifications in some that are not specified for others. So just on the face of consistency. on the face of consistency. As far as the ability to set some restrictions, we've had conversations in the past when we've looked at appointing people or looked at some of the minutes and talked about attendance, and whether or not there are certain boards where a certain percentage of attendance is more critical than others. I think we need to talk about that. When we did the handbook, we did agree that we would have to have people who were residents in good standing, which we didn't specify what that means. In the ordinance, it codifies that planning commission must be registered voters, but...
No, no, it's, it's qualified voters. There's a difference, and the difference is, you could be qualified to vote, but that doesn't mean that you're registered to vote.
Okay, well, I still feel that if you're being appointed to a board who are making decisions and making recommendations, you should probably be a registered voter in the township, whether or not all of you agree or not. My point being that it's surely just a question of process improvement, going through and just looking at what we have out there right now and trying to standardize some things. As you all probably know, I, I like things to be kind of consistent where they can be, knowing that some boards are different than others in their responsibilities and authority. So that was my request, and, and I suggested that it could be one of the goals coming up this year, so I just throw that out for your comments.
Did John give you any idea, Paul, as to how many hours of time we'd be looking at his fees to do something like this?
Oh, I don't know what it would, I, I...
'Cause I, I agree with Mrs. Merrill that there should be some uniformity. I mean, I just don't know that, given where we are this year with the revenue and all that, if this is gonna be a significant expenditure, that this is something we should be thinking about right now.
I, I, I don't know what the expenditure would be, but there would be a significant amount of work associated with this, and the other thing is that what council needs to decide for itself is to what extent you want to codify some of these requirements as opposed to them being criteria that council applies on its own when you consider people for membership. So like, for instance, with regard to the zoning board and the planning commission, you have very little latitude in that area because the municipality planning code speaks about membership, and that's why this thing about qualified voter is, is actually even goes beyond where, where the municipality planning code is, because it talks about residency. So, you know, when you look at a qualified voter, a qualified voter in the state of Pennsylvania is eighteen years old and it's thirty days living in the community, I think that's in line with what the municipality's planning code had in mind. It raises an age that is beyond what's provided in the municipality planning code.
And I guess the question becomes if we codify things, like, for example, if we were to codify an attendance requirement, that you have to attend a minimum of nine out of twelve meetings every year, and then we have some member of the zoning board, the planning commission, who's got a sick spouse or something, or gets ill and they miss five out of, five out of twelve, and we don't kick them off, is the next time that we kick somebody off another board because they just didn't show up, does that open us up to potential, a potential lawsuit because we haven't followed what our codes does? And, you know, I don't know whether, what awful problem I had, it's my concerns if we codify it, then, you know, we have no, no discretion, right?
Well, I think you always have discretion, but what you're left with is granting departures to be, you know, so we would, it would be the responsibility of, of the manager's office to maintain that record, and when someone deviates from it, to either enforce that rule or have a departure from that regulation come to the council for action.
Well, the, the reason that I think, and why do we put it in an ordinance or we establish guidelines? I, I feel that having a conversation about the boards and what the membership requirements are and attendance and everything else would make sense. And also, how, how, if we have to remove somebody, what are the steps? We've unfortunately had those circumstances happen, and we've kind of worked through it, but I think that people need to understand when they are applying for a board, you know, what it all involves. And I realize these are volunteers for the most part, these people, you know, aside from the authorities who are getting some reimbursement, these people are volunteers, and I, I recognize the commitment, but on the other hand, some of the boards are, are, have more responsibility in respect of making recommendations to council, and so consistency in attending meetings so that the decisions are being made by the same group of people seems logical to me. Now, again, I'm throwing that out as something that I would like to have happen if, you know, I, if you want, I'll make the motion and we can vote on it. That would be the way to decide it, unless you want to go with a consensus one way or the other, that we just talk about the boards first of all and then decide how we want to proceed.
What's the, what's the motion?
Well, I'm saying, do, I can make a motion that we, or I can make a recommendation, instead of moving the ordinances, that we need to talk about council...
Well, I mean, are we talking about items one through five? Because I, I have issues with number five for sure. I don't think we need an emergency response committee at all, and...
Well, I did bring that up, and we could have that conversation.
I'm not, I'm not for, then what's next? We're gonna check to make sure people voted?
I mean, I agree with number two. I, I agree that if you're delinquent in taxes and fees, you shouldn't be sitting on a board.
And we've exercised that expression.
I mean, in reality, whoever's on the...
Well, what happens if we don't pay our taxes? There's nothing in there that says we're, we're not allowed to serve as councilman.
Well, that may be the case.
I mean, that doesn't seem fair to me.
It doesn't. I mean, there might be certain...
Yeah, but if you...
I don't see like we have a problem with trying to hear something that's not appropriate.
Yeah, you're fixing a, a nonexistent problem.
I don't know. Well, I mean, I can understand you want to have some consistency, but like, as I look at these, these, I don't see how you could require somebody to be a registered to act to vote. I mean, maybe somebody chooses not to register, because it's a First Amendment thing.
I don't think you could recruit someone.
And you're not, you're gonna disqualify, I mean, there's a, I mean, I don't know. I, I tend to, I tend to throw, what Frank said, that it'd be nice to maybe take a look at this, I'm just not interested in taking a look at it now. I mean, I think we've got too, too much on our plate, it's gonna be coming up.
Remind me, Paul, what justification did we use the time we had the gentleman who didn't come to the planning commission meeting, who we kicked off, whose name I can't remember now?
The one who was delinquent on his taxes?
Yeah, right, right, he was delinquent, but we, we solely removed him for non-attendance, right? The fact that he didn't pay his taxes didn't have anything to do with it, right?
Although, that came to light because he was up for, um, he was up for reappointment, I believe, as well.
No, we had just reappointed him, and we removed him like three months later, 'cause he stopped coming to the meetings.
I think we, we always have the option of removing somebody from a board.
Well, I think you're right. I, I think we have a lot of discretion in that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, you know, just because somebody gets appointed to a board doesn't mean they're there forever.
Right, and my point, like I said earlier, is if, if we codify something and create a series of requirements, then I think...
The more you codify it, the less flexibility you have.
Well, and that's why I brought in after discussion of whether it's an ordinance favor or a situation of, whether you can add and going through that. As far as term limits, I brought that up before. You know, Mr. Ball said, you know, it doesn't mean you want to leave and want forever, but we consistently reappoint people over and over and over and over again, and they do a good job, but it doesn't, until they decide to leave, there's no opportunity for other people.
Of course, some people could say that about us, too.
Well, I'm glad...
Yes, they have.
I'm glad.
Well, I mean, you know, again, we, we have people that are, you know, when, when somebody is doing a good job on a board, that's, you know, their input is consistent and good, and, you know, there's no reason that they couldn't be reappointed, but we don't have to reappoint them just because they say they would like to be reappointed.
I don't think we've had an issue with a specific board.
I don't, I don't either.
The top four is, it's not one believe either. It seems like there's enough turnover where the, the people that have been there for a certain period of time, the minority...
Probably the longest-serving people we have are on like some of the sewer authority or something, it's a, some long, long-term people there.
Library.
Library.
Yeah, planning, I don't think we've had any turnover in six years, right? Since I've been here? I don't think, anyway. I know when Mr. Verlato passed away, that was the only, there's only been one change on planning in the six years I've, five years I've been here.
Well, alternatives are new because we added the alternates more recently.
Yeah, but I mean, there's, adding the alternates, I think, was a, was a good, a good idea, and I think that, that on some of those boards, it's really a positive thing to have, you know, institutional knowledge.
And I'm not disagreeing with that at all, but that's not what I'm saying. I was suggesting that we look at it and decide whether or not those are issues that need to be addressed. It sounds like you've poked through it and decided that it doesn't need to be addressed.
Yeah. I think that Mr. Curry made the point that it's just, you know, it's something that, I think consistency and terminology is, is good. As has been pointed out, there are some inconsistencies in terminology, but right now, I think we've got other things that we need to concentrate on.
Thank you for the discussion.
Okay. All right. Payroll and bills?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on this accounts payable run, you'll notice a significant number of refunds for rec programs and rentals, and we did pay seventeen thousand for the floodplain project at the Briarwood plant along Bevot Road, and also to Mac and Engineering for work at Peterswood Park and Rolling Hills Park. I also reviewed the payroll. It's down about, Mr. Lauer, about forty thousand based on the layoffs that we approved. I reviewed all the expenses and knew that we approved them as submitted.
Second.
The discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, correspondence, there is none. Minutes? Anybody want to talk about any of the minutes?
Miss Lanias? Miss Lanias, I have a couple names. One, as of last Thursday, we believe we have approval from the Washington County Conservation District for the extension of Rolling Hills Drive. So, um, they needed a set of drawings which were delivered to them on Friday, which they intend to stamp. I would assume at that point in time, we will be getting our permits from all of the agencies, so that project's going to be ahead. The other thing is the Rolling Hills Park project, the Loop Road, that's not going to the Washington County Conservation District, so that they can begin review of that project. The other, the other one is something that came in today, I guess over the weekend, we had a food truck that was at St. David's Church. This food truck apparently participates in the farmer's market there, but they were asking to be able to be at that location without the farmer's market, and I think that's a problem from the standpoint that you have many pizza shops in town, and I don't think they're necessarily, you know, it's one thing when you have a special event and you have a food truck there, but to have a pizza truck there, when, when one thing that Peter Township has enough of right now is, is pizza shops and...
And banks.
And everybody knows all of the restaurants are struggling right now, so they have requested the day for a special permit, but I can't in good conscience recommend that we, that council approve that, but...
They just have it there, what do you mean, they want it there all, all the time?
They want to have it there, well, they showed up last weekend.
Last weekend?
Last weekend, and they want to do this every week without the farmer's market. I don't know when, I think the farmer's market's gonna open, but I don't know when that is. Again, it's one thing for them to be part of that as an event, but just the meat or to sell pizza, I don't know how you do that in a residential district, have a commercial operation that competes with, with...
Grounded, grounded groups here.
I was part of a farmer's market. I'm not even sure I was part of a farmer's market.
Well, they have food.
Do they? They have prepared food?
Yeah, they have prepared food. They got the badass barbecue rolls.
Yes, very good.
But what's the relationship to St. David's? I mean, did St. David's tell them they're allowed to do that?
Well, I'm assuming St. David's must have thought it was okay to be in the parking lot, but that doesn't necessarily need that they have authorization to do it from the township.
Well, and they had high demand, too, from what I heard, they opened at two and they sold out by three-thirty, and I know, 'cause my wife was at the front of the line.
You know, I, I would have to agree with Mr. Lauer, I think that it makes sense, not specifically because of what they serve, but the idea that if somebody wants to justify somebody who says, "Oh, yeah, park here, you can go ahead," and then we're gonna be, who knows what the implications are, people might want to park wherever they...
Well, if they serve Thai food, I'd be all for it.
Now, now, Mr. Verlato, he can be...
Well, and that's really the biggest issue. If you give it the one, you know, you give these people a permit, they don't have to come to the door, and you just...
In any instance, it's not last week, the municipality in the South Hill, one of the things was circulating, was the question of like, who has food truck ordinances, because these food trucks are beginning to appear separate from events, and, and people are concerned about that.
Don't we ask one?
What's that? We do not have a food truck ordinance.
Well, we probably should.
And that'd be something to examine.
Well, I think the fact that we have a special permit section in our ordinance addresses it, you know, to service it.
Well, we had an issue, didn't we, at the soccer field with the, what is it, the icy, ice cold frosty guy? There was somebody there a couple summers where he would just pull up and sort something, and of course, people just...
Yes.
So, that was people...
But you have a little bit more control there because you're doing it inside of a park.
But the point being that he wouldn't have a frosty and without any... So I would agree with Mr. Lauer.
I'll note on Cinco de Mayo, coming down Washington Road in Mount Lebanon, there was a Mexican food truck, and traffic was just tied up trying to get through Mount Lebanon with people pulling off in non-parking areas, and there was a big, long line of people trying to patronize the place.
You're gonna see these trucks all over the place now, 'cause the restaurants are closed and people are desperate, tired of cooking, and want to get out, so this is gonna be a bigger problem moving forward.
And probably, as someone who's been talking about, because Michelle Harmon had alluded to potentially using that, having those, we do have on a community day, obviously.
We have a community day, we have concerts, we have events of a lot of...
But that's tied to an event.
No, I understand, I'm just...
But, but what you're right about is that I, I do think we need to have an ordinance that addresses food trucks.
'Cause really, right...
I think it's a critical issue, and it's something we probably have to...
You know, we just charge them a fee, like five thousand dollars a week.
Yeah, but it still would have to be in a commercial district, though.
Oh, yeah, but, you know, we could charge them a fee, but...
I mean, look at the, look where the cam yard used to be, they got a parking lot that's three-quarters empty, they could park twenty of these up there and charge them, you know, a thousand bucks a day or whatever, and make a nice profit.
Kind of like the barbecue.
Right, exactly.
And they do it to stink.
Well, barbershop truck. I'm sure their restaurant leases up that way, would probably object.
If they have a barber, if they have a barber shop, man, I, I'd shut it up, you know?
You need a motion.
Okay, anything else on the miscellaneous?
We need a motion on this.
The permit?
On to reject this.
I may let you reject the permit.
Second. The discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I think you should look at the draft and something, but not, it's not pressing.
Anything else miscellaneous?
I have two questions. The glass recycling, based on the bills, seems to be pulled at least once a week.
Yes.
I just wondered, were we moving forward on looking at the grant opportunities for that and maybe bidding on, I don't know? It's about four-twenty a pull.
Yeah. The, the grant is, the new deadline for the grant, is, is my understanding, is next Friday, we do intend to place the, place an application.
And then one last question, a miscellaneous, yes, at the last meeting, we talked about union townships requests that we take care of a problem that the show, show came, did we have any further conversation?
We, we have indicated to them that we're willing to engage in a partnership since there's somebody that's offered to meet with them. They've had a change in personnel down there, so I think that's what happened there.
Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda? Items? Comments?
At, at next agenda, will you be prepared to talk about any other staffing changes or bringing people back?
I have...
What do you, what do you think that window would be?
Well, we are gonna be bringing back two clerical individuals starting next Monday. I do want to talk to council after this meeting and executive session about an issue with a personnel issue and stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else? Rejourn.